Again, as a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that your cell phones are turned off. Any final action taken on conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the planning commission's decision filed in the planning office by Monday, November 4th at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, November 19th at 9:15 in this same room. At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the September 23rd meeting are included in the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the planning commission members to any item listed on the consent agenda? Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Item number one was the approval of minutes. Item number two is a conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building area. With 3,510 square feet requested, this is located one and a half miles northeast of Crooks.
I just have a couple of questions.
All right, I'll move item number two. Item number three, a conditional use permit to transfer one building eligibility from the southwest corner to track one of Nelson's addition. This is located approximately five miles east of Sioux Falls. You want that one moved? Item number four is a conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building area, requesting 2,996 square feet. And this is located approximately one-fourth mile east of Crooks. All right, so we're moving items two and three to the regular agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the... was it... everybody was okay with that, right? Okay, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda which would now include item one and item four? And a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, so if you were item number four, one is the minutes. Four, if you were item number four, you're free to leave. And now we'll hear from the plant... oh, do I have to do something else here? Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody vote? All right, we'll move on with item number two.
All right, good evening, everyone. Conditional use permit 13-0055. Basically, he applied for a conditional use permit to exceed the 1,200 square feet accessory building area. The petitioner would like to construct a 2,646 square foot accessory structure and remove two 192 square foot buildings, basically, they're sheds out there, and keep an 864 square foot building. The 864 square foot building will be moved and the requested 2,646 square foot accessory building will be placed in that location. Basically, petitioner's property is located north. The new structure would be located just north of his home. And then the... no, the proposed structure would be in the northeast corner of the lot. And then the existing 864 square foot building would be moved to just north of his home. And after, two other properties within close proximity to petitioner's property have accessory structures that exceed 1,200 square feet. One, there was a 3,510 square foot accessory building. That would be his requested. But there, I did discover that two properties north of the petitioner's property, there was a request back in 2004 for, to exceed the accessory building of 3,500 square feet. And if I could see the pictures, there's... they just built an addition onto that accessory structure which they applied for a conditional use permit. So they would be right at that 3,500. It's not listed in the staff report, but later I came to find out, you'll see on the map, that two properties north of there, that's where that property is. There's two vacant lots, and then the next property above that, the one that's not listed with the accessory building, total accessory building square footage. You'll see that on the map with the other, the other structures in the area. Besides that, I wouldn't see any nuisances given with the accessory structure of this size. And that's all I have to say.
It appears that there are several little lots in that quarter section there. But, and you're telling us now that even though it wasn't marked, one of them had a 3,500 square foot building on it?
Yes, later I went back and I discovered that, I went through the files and tried to find a building permit for it. And there was, they applied in 2004 for a conditional use permit to build that structure which exceed, which would bring their total accessory building area up to 3,500 square feet.
Any other questions for David?
Would you like David to read the conditions of approval for everyone?
That would probably be nice.
That the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed 2,646 square feet, that the accessory building shall not exceed 35 feet in height, that a building inspection is required to determine if the building does not exceed that 2,646 square feet from the outside parameters, that a building permit would be required, that the building shall be in accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential lot, that the only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building and no commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed in the time, that all outdoor lighting shall be full cutoff and fully shielded, designed to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries, and that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the accessory building at any time after proper notice to the owner is given to ensure that the property is in compliance with the conditional use permit conditions and the many high accounting requirements.
So this all is dependent on the fact that he's going to move a 864 square foot building off of this?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for David?
Well, looking at it, and the listing of the item is requesting 3,510, and yet in the... are you, is it 3,510 is the 864 plus the 2646?
Yes.
And so then in the, in the, in the requirements with the conditions, giving the word with the conditions, shouldn't have read the total accessory should not exceed 3,510 then instead of the 2646? In the number one of the conditions?
It should, number one and number three should say 3,510.
So it's not dependent on him moving that one off?
No. It's, he's gonna remove two smaller buildings. The 864 building is gonna be moved someplace else on the lot.
Okay.
And then he wants to build a 2646 building.
So how do we come up with 3,510?
The two, 864.
Oh, keep the 864, okay.
He's just turning it.
But he is removing two 102.
Yeah. So that's a, so it, the total amount is 3,510.
All right. Finally got that, okay.
So it's tough without the overheads and stuff, but, you know, where is this other lot that had the other building?
You'll see, the third lot to the north of this property.
The third one right here?
Yes. There's two vacant lots and then that home right there, they just, they have two accessory structures which they add an addition on that one in 2004. And it's turned up to that 3,500.
Any other questions for David? Okay, is the petitioner here?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you step forward and give us your name and address, please?
Good evening, I'm Dave Hossley, and I just, I'm in the process of moving to 47204 to 256th Street Rentar. And I'm one requesting to put the shop up. Storage, well, it'll be heated shop basically, because I like things inside, I don't like things sitting outside. And I don't like the other two small buildings, so I wanna clean the yard up. And the little horse barn that I'm putting the new floor under is gonna be kinda like a little woodworking shop, and sawdust and other stuff doesn't mix, that's why I want two separate. So, any other questions?
Any questions for David? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this item?
I think my questions are answered.
They've been answered, all righty then. Okay, and anybody else wants to speak? All right.
Approve of the conditions. Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion, counsel, so it's gonna approve.
Okay, good evening, Scott Anderson, representing the planning department. Item number three is a conditional use permit 13-53 to transfer one eligibility from the southwest quarter to an existing track one Nelson's addition. The property is located at 48438, 256th Street, which is approximately five miles east of Sioux Falls or generally sort of south of Valley Springs. The applicant is Harley Skyberg. The applicant wants to transfer a building eligibility from the southwest quarter to track one. This property is located on 256th Street. The applicant has indicated that moving the eligibility would allow for residential use of an existing platted lot with, there are existing accessory structures on the, on the lot, but no residence. The lot was created, but no eligibility was assigned to it. I inspected the site on October 4th, and there are no animal confinements near the transfer. And the transfer is located in an area where there are already several existing lots to the south, the east, and the west. There are two large accessory structures already on this track one of Nelson's addition. One is a 24 by 70 foot accessory structure which was constructed in 1994. And in 1995, a 32 by 100 foot accessory structure was built. In 2012, there was a major fire in the 24 by 70 foot structure, and the applicant obtained a building permit to remodel and repair the structure. There, it appears that the applicant may be transferring an eligibility to bring this property into compliance as, when I was there, the one structure that's closest to the road looks like it's already a quasi-residence. So I attempted to talk to Mr. Skyberg and was unable to. However, they would not be allowed to construct a house on the site until they clear up that issue with the, with the planning department, make sure they're only building one house on the property. That being said, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit 1356 with the following condition. Number one, that a right to farm notice shall be placed on the deed prior to issuance of a building permit for a single-family residence. As I indicated, the property is already platted, that's typically one of our conditions, but it's already a platted lot. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
So in this particular case then, Scott, would it be appropriate to add another condition saying it must be brought into compliance before?
Well, we could add that condition, but it's, I talked to several neighbors and I've gotten mixed messages from the neighbors. Some say that there's people that they've rented out an apartment in there before, and I haven't been able to confirm that that's been the case. But it's, it's my hope that they're gonna bring this into compliance because it looks like it's an out-of-compliance lot right now. There's no building eligibility on it, there's two accessory structures. One of them looks like an attached garage on a residence. That's the one that was on fire, caught on fire and was remodeled in 2012. So it's sort of a tough one.
Well, not really. If they haven't been compliances, pretty easy to put it on there and make it a requirement.
Good.
You have something for you to work with.
Well, when it's all said and done, I just wanna make sure we have one single-family residence on that lot. That's really all we're at, and I attempted to, I contacted Mr. Skyberg, and I don't think he's here today. So is, is it your intent to construct a house on there, or you're gonna?
I'm definitely helping him out with the building.
Okay.
And he's claiming there will be a house constructed. What you're talking about now in that garage is, is storage.
Let's, they'll, why don't we, why don't you come up when they're done with me, and then they'll ask you a couple of questions? So, the applicant's here, so.
All right. I think we'll have the applicant come up, we may need you to come back, but.
All right.
Either one or both, if you can come to the podium and state your name and address. The applicant or whoever wants to speak for the applicant.
My name's Gary Skyberg, this is my father, Arnold.
Okay. Do you wanna address the items that have been discussed so far?
Basically, what we're looking to do is build a residential home back, in fact, further back behind the buildings. I've got two grandkids that live with me now, I'm raising, that I've had for six years. I was raised in the country, his farming alliance, we're gonna put this house, which is where I grew up, and I guess I'd like to have my grandsons grow up in the same area.
So is there a residence on there currently, or not?
No.
Not at all? So the reports and stuff were just?
The building he is talking about is being used for storage. I just, I mean, I've got my boat in there, I've got my four-wheelers, my lawnmowers, everything I use to take care of the acres out there. There's absolutely nobody living there. I do have a bathroom in that building, and I was told by planning zoning if you had lived in there. You know, I, the permits were issued to me to build these. All we're looking to do is move my family out closer to my father's property. I, I go out to that property one or two times a day every day.
So nobody's ever lived there?
Well, there have been people that have stayed there. My mom says there have been, it's been a while back.
But you understand that, you can't have a home without that?
No, I understand that.
I just wanna make sure you understood that. Okay, does anybody else have any questions for this couple? Thank you.
Are you Jerry O'Hara's daughter?
I'm not. But I do know who he was.
I know Jerry O'Hara.
Yeah, I knew him too, but no, not really this.
Okay.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Please go forward. You need to state your name and address, make your comments.
My name is Jill Burr. I live at 48436, 265th Street. When Skyberg bought that property, there was one building eligibility on that property, and he chose to sell off that one acre with the building eligibility so he knew that he could not live on the acres that were left. And since he's lived there, there's been a meth lab fire in that, what he's calling a garage structure closest to the road. There's been a registered sex offender living there when we, when there's children in the neighborhood, when there's nobody supposed to be living on that property. He did state that there was no animal shelter there. There is, right now there is pigs living in a shed further back of that property. There is a pole barn there, and that property is also rented out a mechanic's there who works on cars, so there's traffic going in and out of there with noise all the time, day of the night, he'll come 11 o'clock at night to work on his cars. Skyberg has been known to, they had race cars over there, so they'd come, load up their race cars at 6 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday morning, revving up the engine. And we have recently found out that our three acres that we have adjoining his property, he had rented out to a man as his own property when it was ours. So we do not feel like they have been a very good neighbor.
Can I ask you a question?
Jill, are you open to a question?
I am.
So on this map here, and I'm sorry we don't have the overhead stuff working, this is where they want to put this stuff. Where was the eligibility sold to? Is that like over here or something?
No, it's further east. It's right there.
On there, okay, and where do you live on this?
I live west.
That's this way?
Yeah, right next west.
This way here then?
Yes.
Okay.
Not across the street, but right next to it.
Oh, right, right here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
May I say something?
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to make any comments?
Hi there, thank you very much for having this meeting tonight. My name's Bruce Lee, I live at 48448, 265th Street.
What was your last name, sir?
Lee, L-E-E. And I guess our main concern, and I'm speaking for not just the folks that are here, but some of the other residents out there, we're just concerned that everything is done according to regulation and it's followed up on because of, again, the, the issue with people living in that apartment that, on the north end of that apartment that ended up having the fire in it. Yeah, it's unfortunate the fire happened, but it was a meth lab that took it down. And then the registered sex offender out there, there was a lot of consternation over that, and they finally did have that individual move out. But again, that's fairly, that's pretty unnerving when you have something like that happen and you aren't made aware of it. You find out about it through other sources. And then also, there was a camper that they were living in out there for a while, and that, there was an attempt made to trench in a septic system or a pipe to an existing septic system. And so it's just these kinds of things that have taken place over the years that have us concerned, that we just wanna make sure everything is done to code. You know, I understand moving building eligibility, I understand all that. He has four of them, and that would be a good place to put a house. But, you know, we all just are concerned. Okay?
All right, does anybody have any questions for this gentleman? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else wanna make any comments? I am gonna let the petitioner come, you wanted to say a couple of comments?
I guess what I'm not understanding is...
Well, make sure, yeah, address us.
That she had mentioned that they had let me use their three acres of property for my sheep out there. I don't know who she's talking about that I rented it to, or, I mean, that's ridiculous. I don't know what she's talking about there. The sex offender that was a friend of mine that got thrown in jail one time, and he needed a place to stay for a while, and I let him stay in my camper out there. I'm not gonna deny that. I didn't even know he was a sex offender until it was brought up to me by Porter Williams. I didn't know his history, that was 25 years ago, I didn't even know him 25 years ago. So I, you know, that accusation, I, you know, I don't know where it come from. But, you know, we've lived in the area since 1962. I grew up on the farm that joins that property, and we've been there all this time.
How about another question for him? How about the mechanic using the shed out there? That repair?
I've got this same friend of mine that comes out there and helps me, he worked for me all last year. He worked, he helped me. That fire that they're saying was a meth fire, that was in the paper saying it was an electrical fire. I mean, that's, that's the way it was, if you talk to the fire chief from Valley Springs, that's what he told me it was. It was a fire, an electrical fire. I mean, we showed, we were shown where it started and everything. I'm, I'm not gonna deny that there was meth out there, nothing that I knew about, but I'm not, if there was, you know, it wasn't anything I knew anything about. But that was an electrical fire, that's what I was told, and that's what the fire chief from Valley Springs.
So again, has there been someone using that place to do mechanical repairs for a higher basis?
No, not at all. He worked for me. Now, he comes out there and he helps me, he works on his vehicles, he's got vehicles, he works at Nordstrom's during the day now, he started working for Nordstrom's last year when I ran out of work for him. And he come, brings his cars out there, he's probably got three or four different cars that he works on, his own. And, you know, it's, you know, it's a shop, we worked on my dad's tractor over there. And, you know, we work on, I've got a lot of vehicles of my own that I work on. I change my oil over there. You know, I've been working on my own vehicles all my life. I mean, that shop was put in there, and, and, I mean, it was the shop that the county, you know, gave me the eligibility to build.
Building permit?
Well, I'm sorry, building permit.
Mr. Skyberg?
Scott, do you wanna, go ahead.
What about racing the cars at night and stuff?
I haven't raced a car for six years, and a car over there for six years.
Okay, and your friend?
No, he doesn't have a race car either. Nobody around there has a race car.
Okay, how about running the engines loudly and all that stuff? Is that normal at night?
No, not at all. And if there's a car out there at night, it's inside the shed. There hasn't been any kind of a loud noise car in, on that property for, since I had my race cars. I used to have two drag cars in my life, and I both raced.
Thank you.
Scott, I was wondering if you would address, they had, I heard comment about you had put no animal confinement operations, but she's indicating there was livestock there, but you might wanna just clarify what no animal confinement operations?
Yeah, it's zoned A1, so if they met the criteria, I mean, you can have up to 50 hogs on there without it being considered an animal confinement. When I was out there, I did notice that the property was fenced in, there's probably, I don't know, 10 or 15 goats, sheep, I mean, there were, it was fenced off. I couldn't get back any further, that's why I was just right at the edge of the road. But there were, there were some sheep there, but not that would, not the amount that would constitute a confined animal feeding operation. They were roaming around the, on the grass.
I did buy six little baby pigs for my grandkids.
And that's fine, yeah. All right. Anybody, well, I guess we're done.
Okay.
Okay, just, yeah, briefly.
My name's Dwayne Berg, he owns my wife, I live right next door to the property. And as far as the mechanic being over there, I had a gentleman pull up from my driveway and ask if I, I don't remember the name he used. But I said, well, I don't know this guy. He says, well, he does mechanic work out here. So I'm assuming he was out there to get his car worked up. I told him the only mechanic I know of is next door, so, that's all I got.
All right, thanks. All right.
Oh, one more thing. As far as rental property, you know, I had a farmer, had a farmer come up to me when he saw me out there working back my property. And he apologized to me for paying rent to Skyberg's for the last 10 years for my property. I let him on there one time to run his animals, and he just continued since then.
Could you tell me who that was?
Yeah, funky.
All right. I think the floor is closed right now, okay? So.
My only concern is that it has to be done right, what's there has to be right to start. You know, we always go back to, well, you don't get to do this if things aren't in compliance to start. That's always been our normal approach.
I think maybe we should defer action and make sure it's been brought up to specs and then I, we'd have an opportunity to check out some of these other issues, whether it's the business operating there or whether it's a meth lab we'd be able to look into.
If you did want to continue it, I would be glad, I was unable to get into the property. It was gated. And if I could meet Mr., either Gary or Harley on the property and if they were willing to show me the inside and that it wasn't a house or, I mean.
Yeah, that would be a great idea.
I'd be glad to report back to you, but.
To make a motion to defer action for one month.
Well, and I think we can defer it until Scott's had an opportunity to meet with them. We really don't have to take any action until they've had, right?
That's great, yeah.
We can defer it until you've had an opportunity to meet with them and inspect the property and then you can put it back on the agenda, would probably be my thoughts, but, sorry. I interrupted your motion, Jeff.
That is a motion. What you said.
That's great.
And I'll second it.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So we're done with that one and as soon as you guys meet with him and he does his inspection, we'll put it back on the agenda. Okay, we have one item left, number five.
Okay, item five. Once again, Scott Anderson from the planning department. This is an item that is being recalled for your consideration. It is a recall of conditional use permit 10-34 to allow a contractor shop and storage yard. This is in the Brower edition and the property is on Jesse Street, I believe. But on July 26, 2010, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to allow the contractor shop and storage yard and it was approved with 10 conditions. And about a year later, staff became aware that Mr. Hofer was storing equipment on the property without the screening fence, which is a requirement of condition number three. And on July 13 of 2011, staff contacted the applicant by phone to explain the screening fence requirement. Mr. Hofer indicated at that time that the fence would be installed and since 2011, staff has contacted Mr. Hofer 18 times in regard to having the required screening fence installed. Copies of all the attempts, record of all the, our tries and letters to Mr. Hofer have been included for your review. And the last letter was sent to Mr. Hofer on August 19 of 2013, which indicated that the conditional use permit would be recalled for review at this meeting if the fence was not installed by September 22nd, oh, sorry, September 27. The letter prompted a call for Mr. Hofer and once again, he indicated that he would have the fence installed. Mr. Hofer continues, continues to use the property for the storage of the fence, of, for the storage of building materials for his contractor's yard, roofing in particular, without screening it. On October 4th, I also conducted a site inspection. It appeared that fencing posts had been delivered to the property. I was out there again today and the applicant had erected five posts, corner posts. And he, he did call me today and said that he really wants to install the fence, but it's been a matter of not having time and I indicated that he would need to come tonight and discuss it with you. Article 1911 of the zoning ordinance allows the planning director to recall any conditional use permit to the planning commission for review and action when a finding is made that the terms, conditions, or requirements of the conditional use permit have not been complied with. Specifically, condition number three requiring the screening fence has not been met. The property owner has demonstrated a history of promising to have the fence installed and then not following through. Staff has worked with this property owner for over two years to no avail and based on these facts, it's the findings of the planning director that the conditional use permit, that, excuse me, that the conditions of conditional use permit 10-34 are not being met and therefore I'm recalling the conditional use permit for the planning, to the planning commission for review. Given the long history of our attempts to bring this property into compliance with the conditions of approval with no avail, staff recommends that conditional use permit 10-34 be revoked and the applicant will be then given notice to remove all materials from the site. So our recommendation is that conditional use permit 10-34 be revoked.
Questions for Scott?
I would just say thank you for having me. Rather complete dossier of all the contacts that helps a lot.
I had good pictures, but they're, I mean, there's, he does roofing and there was, there's all kinds of material on the property.
Is the petitioner here? Do you want to step forward and give us your name and address, please?
Hey, James Hofer, 4649-4260th Street in Hartford. I've been out so financially, I was just getting it done. I hired a guy to get it done, but he couldn't do it for me, so I had to do it myself, but I didn't quite get it done.
All right. I'm just curious, when do you think you could get it done by?
Well, I got all the posts, hold Doug, could have by the weekend, get all the wood, posts and the wood in and start hanging steel.
So within a month?
Yes.
You can continue it, but, and that's an option.
Is it an option acceptable to you?
I have a question, please.
Yeah.
So in 720 days, you didn't have two days to put up a fence.
Now, we'll all be busy working out of town a lot. I couldn't get it done. I hired a guy, the last time I forgot the letter, had a letter, I couldn't get it done. Just going to drag the post. But it didn't work till.
But 720 days, you've known this for two years and we're supposed to just say, oh, okay, we'll wait because you're not in compliance with something you agreed to do two years ago, correct?
Correct.
I guess, I'm self-employed too. When I leave here tonight, I'll go spend two hours in my office here tonight. That's the way it is. There's Sundays. That's life. And I know sometimes it's financially difficult, but it's, it's two years, it's 720 days. And planning, and their planning offices have every right to present it the way they did because that's what it is. Because they have no teeth otherwise if we don't support them, unfortunately. And of course, it'd take you 30 days to clean everything out there if you do revoke it. That's the other I have. But I would look at it this way, I would support a 30-day only and that is it. You're done. I think, I don't know how the rest of the planning commission feels, but that's how I would vote for absolute denial in 30 days.
I could work nights, get lights out there, get it done that time.
It's dark at 5:00 next week. It's going to take some light.
Any other comments or any other questions for James?
I have to agree with Mike on this. These things do tend to drag out and, you know, it's, it's no different than, you know, the check is in the mail. These assurances that have happened over, over the years haven't been followed through on. In my job, in my other job, we have to clean up things all the time that have gone on for, for years and years and it's no fun. I don't know how we can impress upon you enough that this needs to happen. And I can tell you, it's going to get, the ground is going to get frozen, it's going to be snowing, it's going to be raining. It's not going to be easy to get it done now, but I don't think we have any choice but to, to, to plan a cessation of operations if, if this doesn't get done ASAP.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hofer?
Good, thank you. We'll discuss here and come up with a plan. Oh yeah, does anybody in the audience wish to speak to this item? All right.
Since we don't have any public comment, can we have a motion?
I'll defer for 30 days.
I have a, so I can discuss this.
Oh, you want a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
Yeah. Is there some other way? I'm thinking, Scott, can we move the motion to actually revoke on November 30 if this is not done? And then we don't have to come back here. I mean, we'll be back here, but I mean, it's off our agenda item. If we just say today, as of November 30th, it's revoked unless staff finds the fence up.
Sure you could.
I would admit I wish to reflect that.
I mean, that's.
Then it won't come back before you if it's, if it's, if I'm understanding your motion, then if the fence is up, then we're all good. If it, if it isn't, then it's revoked and he would have five working days after your date of revocation to appeal to the plant, to the county commission. And your date was, I.
Do we want to do it the date of the meeting or do we want, I would just say?
November 25th, I think is our next meeting.
It's up to you, so.
Because then that falls into five days.
We need a date specific then if you're going to do that kind of a motion.
November 25th. Would be our next meeting.
So I could amend my motion to say we will revoke the conditional use permit.
Revoke.
As of November 25th, provided if the property is no longer in compliance. Is that how you'd say that?
That he isn't, if.
I don't have way to my words.
I think you need to indicate that as of November 30th, if he's not in compliance with all the conditions of approval, the, the conditional instrument will be revoked.
And if he's in compliance?
Then he is in compliance and it continues. I mean, then he can still do his work.
That'd be the simplest way.
Then we're done.
All right. So we have a motion by Mike, a second by Mark. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, very good.
The only question, did we, I guess it should have been before we voted, November 25th or November 30th? You said November?
I think it said November 25th.
25th, okay.
Date of our meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
The 30th, it has to appeal.
Yeah.
All right. Any old business, new business or county commission item?
No.
All right, then our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Are staff on page? Where's the motion on yet?
In the process of hiring for a new position.
Just one?
Just one.
Well, the other one should be. One or more should be up soon.
I'm going to meet with God.
Oh, okay. When I get the letter and I have to come in and apply for the building permit. Okay, okay. I didn't know how that, how that.